The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one bound in the mistle with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Stephanie.
Seconded by Bo, only in favor. Six oh. Now we just need your motion to approve the consent agenda for questions about anything. Now's the time to ask or if you need to sustain another thing. Now's the time to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Also give you a motion by Stephanie. Seconded by Amanda, all in favor. Motion carries six oh. Moving right along with the presentations. We've got Mr. Mike Kelly with us.
Yep, I was to preface this and Mike can come on up there at the podium and just kind of share what you're going to share. Mike and I, he's obviously with Montauk County with Rural Economic Development and we can go into meetings for a long time now, I don't have any mind about seven years worth. He was always gracious to me and invited me right in and so I got to know a little better lay of the land and Mike and I crossed paths thinking about ways we can do better things for kids. We've had the Work Keys that are going on, I think that was today, wasn't it?
April, I believe.
Yeah, well it's coming up, I thought they were giving one today.
They gave the Work Keys today.
Did they? Oh, good.
That's part of getting a work ready.
She let me know how much I owe her.
Part of getting a work ready community, assessing how our students are doing and actually understanding if they're ready for the workforce. It's one of several college and career readiness measures the state actually recognized along with ACT, SAT, ASVAB, and Work Keys, which is also an ACT project as well. So Mike was kind of instrumental in kind of getting us on board there and uses that in his data. So when we're advertising looking for businesses that want to come to Tipton, we're a piece of that puzzle and showing what kind of workforce we have here and what evidence we have. Mike has done some good work, had a lot of hard conversations with a lot of local and area businesses here in Montauk County and actually hired him on at one point and said, hey, we're going to pay you to do this job now. So Mike has a lot of good experience and I've really appreciated his collaboration with us and him robbery. We've been working towards, and it's in our CSEP, our Confidential School Improvement Plan, to start working on these registered apprenticeships and a lot of school districts have done this. It's a lot of work and I don't think I could do it without somebody like Mike and he's going to share a little bit about some approaches we've made to Martin Energy, Como Connect. We already have a flex program where students that hit their senior year, they can go and work in the community and that is supervised by, is that still Ms. Bailey, Ms. Metzger?
No.
No.
Ms. Harper has been the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. And I know I thought Ms. Bailey started that initially, but a lot of changes at any rate. So they've been working in the community. Registered apprenticeships are a little bit different. This allows some on the job training, but also some pay and it's part of our goal. We want our best from Tipton so live, work, grow here, build a home here, raise their families here, for Tipton to be that place where people want to come and raise their families and that's a good goal, I think, overall, just a general goal. But I'm going to let Mike share a little bit about that and also about the annual meeting coming up.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Now, the apprenticeship program, let's talk about it right off the bat. We approached Como, my goal is to give kids that aren't going to go to college the best opportunity for success they can have, you know, be it helping with getting them into technical school. Well, an apprenticeship will help pay training for certain types of jobs if they have an apprenticeship program. So we're trying to get, we approached Como Connect for an apprenticeship program, but they didn't want to lock in an apprenticeship program because once they hire that apprentice, they lose that job for however long that person stays with their company. So they're opting for an internship type program. Now, Martin Energy, on the other hand, is looking at seriously considering an apprenticeship and a pre-apprenticeship program that their apprenticeship program needs to get in place, which I've been pushing them to get me the information to write their Department of Labor standards to get it approved. A pre-apprenticeship program would morph them straight into an apprenticeship position there and they're always looking for electricians and welders. They're both specialized out there to where they don't necessarily trust the Technical College of Missouri or the welding companies or electronic schools to educate what they need. So Dr. Rob and I went out and talked to Martin Energy about getting a program set up to where they can interview a handful of high school students and pick one or two that could step into a pre-apprenticeship program that would dive right into a job there as an apprentice. And in a lot of apprentice programs, you can have them sign an agreement, it's probably not legally binding, but if they agree to stay there two or three years after their apprenticeship is over, they might have that employee for five years total. After the pre-apprenticeship program, the pre-apprenticeship part would be junior senior year, you know, so we're still working on that. My goal is to get, college isn't for everybody. I've said this for years and a lot of people can make really good livings going to a trade school and learning a trade or going straight to work for a company. It really made my, it really touched my heart to see the thing on Facebook where you celebrated the young man going into John Deere's program. Because I think we ought to be celebrating, I've said for a couple of years in meetings, we ought to be celebrating those kids as much as we are the ones signing, and I'm an old sports guy, I went to college to play baseball, that's the only reason I went to college. And, but we need to be celebrating more than just athletes, we need to be celebrating everybody that's working to better themselves, either educationally or stepping right into the workforce. There's a huge need in workforce nowadays and I really commend the board for entering into that agreement with daycare because daycare is a huge issue with workforce that we tackled and started having conversations with. And Dr. Rob and Chrissy Edwards started talking to each other at one of our task force meetings, which I'm hoping it happens in other areas too.
We are getting some calls from other superintendents wondering about how we modeled that and how we got that done.
But, but I really want to encourage the board, you guys have started sort of on CSEP, down the Bright Futures pathway, I think that's the way to go, to give every child the greatest opportunity for success in this school district. And with that, I would like to invite any board member, any public, any general public to come to our annual meeting, April 3rd. It's at 6:00 PM at Sweet Chipotle in California. We have CJ Huff, who was the superintendent of Joplin Schools during the tornado and rebuilding. He started Bright Futures USA and he's going to be talking that evening, speaking for us. And I think it would be very important for everybody that cares about children and their future in this county to be at.
Also invited CJ, he's a very old colleague of mine. My first teaching job that I took at Bolivar, he and I were in orientation together and then taught next door to the building, so that's how I know CJ. And great teacher, great administrator, went on, he was at Eldon for a while, he was at NIXA, and just kind of keeping track of him over the years and then he ended up at Joplin during that tornado. And we actually reconnected at Mexico, they started Bright Futures. And Bright Futures looks a little different, this is one element of it, of trying to create that idea that, you know, we say we build the future, we're building the future, kids are building the future, and we're having them have a destination of where they're going to plug into our community and how. And having a lot of different options that makes sense and actually, you know, they just don't leave on their graduation day and they're meandering around, they're a pretty bright kid, but they just haven't figured it out. It's not the reason why we have Jolene that's working as an advisor, we're trying to get more and more of our kids college and career ready, taking Work Keys, doing all these things that show that, hey, we've got them ready, all they have to do is pull the trigger or take a step the right direction and they know where they're going. So I really appreciate what Mike has done and I feel like sometimes he's a voice in the wilderness, I know he feels like that sometimes.
Sometimes.
Where do we latch on? This is the type of thing we need to latch on to and that is great.
But I mean, I really appreciate this board because they're willing to do things, you know, I mean.
Yeah. CJ will also be our keynote, I've invited Latham to come in, their school district and Clarksburg to both come in and bring their faculty and staff, to have CJ kind of tailor a message to them to get them inspired to start thinking in this direction. We're going to talk with CJ and I a little bit more about what that message sounds like, so it's only going to be at your end, it's going to be on the kickoff of our school year next year.
Cool.
So just keep building the list of things on where we want to focus. So if this board has something, hey, this is something I think is important we could do too, to get kids plugged into Tipton so they don't all plead to the four corners of the state, you know, they go to college and they stay in Columbia, that doesn't help us. You know, I'm going to use, I don't think Amy will mind, I'm going to use Mandy Stover as an example, who graduated from our vocational programs, ended up at Como, you know, doing some great work there, learning more and was ready to go to work already coming out of the programs that we have at our school and then circled back and now where is she? Nancy?
She's one of the paras in the special ed department.
One of our paras and working toward becoming a fully certified teacher. She helped put our pamphlet together, which addresses our levy issues and trying to attract and retain teachers, which is another one of our goals. And, you know, I think if we keep our best here, Tipton doesn't do anything but thrive. And, but we have to have, Mike and I talked about this, we have to have a place for them to be, they have to see some opportunities here. So if we start with Martin Energy and we start looking at more, we can kind of build some success, that's a good goal to work on, is to build those certified apprenticeships and internships right here locally and just kind of take them to flex to a different level for our kids.
I have some ideas for some other companies, but I want to get one off the ground before we get too big.
Right.
But if anybody wants to come, tell Dr. Rob and he'll RSVP for you so I can have a head count for the caterer.
Anybody feeling like it on April 3rd?
But I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I may have overlooked it, but is there any sort of subsidy for the salaries of these people in there?
Not for salaries, but.
Training, isn't it?
Training. There are grants I can apply for. We are the only economic development organization in the state of Missouri that's a sponsor of registered apprenticeships. The paperwork can be a little bit demanding, but all I do is have the companies log their on the job training and send it to me and I doctor them up and send them on to the Department of Labor. The hard part is getting the Department of Labor standards for that position for that company approved, but I have access to a large database of previously approved standards that I send and I say, pick the one you like and let's tailor this to your specific job you want here and we've kind of made it streamlined to where it's working, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's amazing the stuff that's out there, you wouldn't even know about the fine, we found a program that helps us place veterans at our work for a while and it's subsidized by.
Now, locally, Clay Blake at Kegner's, he fell in love with CAD programming landscaping wise in high school. Well, he wanted to become a CAD person, so we got him into our apprenticeship program. He went to the computer aided design program at State Fair Community College, graduated there and is still employed. He's one of the new ownership groups since Marcus is, next year he will be phased out. So two of his boys and Clay Blake are the new ownership group. He teaches the courses now at State Fair Community College as an adjunct professor, so it's, there's all kinds of successes and I think we can have tremendous amount of success of young people who aren't going to go to college coming out of Tipton R6, so.
Become highly skilled.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
If you all can give me a count by tomorrow, I can kind of let Mike know and RSVP and kind of let them know what to plan for versus being able to know right now.
Moving on down, we got our building administrator reports, they're all over on there, in case you missed it, they had a glow dance.
We went up to shoot and I kept hearing this music, I'm like, what is that? There's something in there, so.
They should have joined in.
Well, we opened the door, we saw a bunch, it was all dark and I was like, okay, I'm out.
If anybody's got any questions, for any administrators, been a lot going on with everything, archery.
I would like to recognize the board for.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead.
It's the board appreciation month, the governor has de-flared, made a declaration, we just want you guys to know how much we truly are appreciated.
You received.
Your hard work, your dedication has not gone unnoticed, we truly appreciate it.
We did receive a proclamation from the governor expressing his appreciation for your service on the school board and we will be raising your pay. It's a lot percent raised to zero, so there you go. Thank you, Amy.
I want to thank Culpeper for adding archery to the activities, for recognizing them, for all the students that are going to state. I mean, I know we're not Misha.
Right.
Like everybody else, but it is, it's nice to see, the kids like to know that they're very nice too.
Right.
So I appreciate that.
I have a couple of things that didn't make there because they just came out in the last couple of days. We went to a casing or math and spelling bee, we had twenty-two, maybe not that many, there's eleven schools, we had two plates today. Easton Huntsburger was third in the third grade math and Alden Pettigrew was second in third grade spelling bee today, so they did great. And then the other thing, we had PBS consultants come again and they, every year they do an evaluation of our school, they come in and interview me and then interview several teachers and students and just get an overview of what's going on. We had a hundred percent and just some of the comments that I wrote down that were important that they notated was, the teachers are kind and energetic, they love the school they work at and the colleagues. One person noted that TES is fair and consistent, so just lots of good things, that our school was bright, clean, and an attractive building, so those are good things to highlight.
I can only see half of them. I don't know what's in there with this thing, I can't figure it out. I pulled it up, I got hair trouble. Come on, computer guy. But anyways, I got half of the matters, I'm not sure I'm going to figure this thing out. I guess everybody knows the girls got another good year.
Boys won a district title.
Boys did win a district title. We had some students get placed on all district teams, all state teams, and I think Coach Reeves was coach of the year, right?
District coach of the year.
District coach of the year.
Yep.
Hey, all right. As Stephanie said, we've got a bunch of guys going, guys and girls going to archery. Other than that.
Five of our 25 kids, a deck of qualify for.
A bunch of them.
FFA will be coming up here shortly, their districts will start April, so we'll have that, and I can report, but you know how they do.
Does anybody else have anything? Nancy's report's on there, if you guys got any questions for her, she's got a flow chart. She must have a process if there's a flow chart. Any questions? Moving right along, old business. You don't have any old business?
You have the school calendar in front of you, it is virtually the same. I will say, we did make some changes and the administrators told me, which I think is a good deal. As you all know, we do have some days beyond the required number of days so we don't have to make up snow days and things like that, but it also gives us a little bit of leeway. If we would make the final four, because we still meet the required number of minutes, I think we're at seven right now, that we've used of the 10 that are built in, so I actually kind of built that calendar so that if we would have to be gone and use those days around the final four, we are ready to go this next year. No pressure, Coach Culpeper. It's virtually the same otherwise, we still have a PD day for almost every month, except at the beginning of the year, we have a couple of days there to kind of get us started. September, we kind of get hit hard and heavy and then try to hit the first Monday almost of every month, build some regularity in there, and those are those gold days that you see, so we can catch up with what the state's asking us to do because it always gets some kind of new requirement. There is still a week long spring break, get a nice break at Christmas. You know, a lot of districts continue to go to the four day week, when they're encountered, I think it's something like seventeen weeks that were actually a full five days or something like that. I think we get very generous breaks, having a spring break in there kind of gives everybody a little bit of a reason and having our regular professional development time keeps us up to date with things like PBIS or starting things like a flex program or any number of things that we're trying to improve, so it gives time with the principals to actually meet with their people and train paras and any number of things that the state likes to throw at us and also things that we know we need to do, so. You've got to remember, you've got two schools going, you've got one for the kids and one for the teachers as well, so it's not just one. Summer school's also listed in there, there's a week in. Summer school's also listed in there. There's a week in between there. That's the same. No significant changes, and we have prom marked in pink for everybody who wants to know prom. The administrators told me that a few years ago, so you kind of have that back in there. Any questions about calendar? Go ahead and go with it. And the earliest start day is the twentieth, so that's the earliest day in August we can start.
Are there any questions about the calendar?
No, but I'll move to twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five.
So, we've got a motion by Beau. Seconded by Ashley. All in favor? Six oh. So, next we got some bids open for Transportation Services.
Got presents for you. Go. Say, never gave me anything. Hi, Ashley. I didn't keep your pair of shoes.
He's got those.
Awesome.
What are you going to need?
John, can you tell me what tab you're continuing to be on?
What?
What your bid, what back tab.
The cost should be pretty much front and back. There's two.
Very back.
There's basically four pages there.
I got it.
There's a primary bid that matches this fact.
Got it.
These are identical, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Take that out. You want to pass one down? About it.
We have a bid from First Student, and it was bid for seventy-one passenger buses, and that was for six. For twenty-four, twenty-five, it was three hundred and fifty-five, twenty-five per day. Vocational bus was two fifty-six eighty-one.
You said that was for six buses?
Yes, up to six is what I put down. No, just to, we may just need five. And they have a chart here that we can review. We won't be approving this today because we need to look through their entire bid, so we might do that at the next meeting, and we can have an interim meeting in the middle of it as well. We have one vocational bus, we said that already, and we have some activity in trip buses to the early childhood. They're having one for the early childhood, one for the outer district van, who will go in Columbia is four sixty-eight ninety-three. That's for one van, and then early childhood is four eighteen ninety-nine. Those look like they go up about how much per year? John, do you have a question?
Three percent.
Three percent per year?
I think that that's the primary bid. There was an alternative bid.
Okay.
And then package two.
Okay.
Should be the last two pages.
See that. What's the difference between that one?
What, basically, the, your primary bid has your liquidating damages in it.
Okay.
And the alternative bids basically factors out what we think the, what the cost may be potentially to cover liquidating damages.
Okay, got it. And we'll go ahead and read Durham's. It's the same sheet. I give you guys a copy of these. Take these here real quick. Don't take me for a second. Copy is right in there. All right, close. Durham has bid for seventy-one passenger buses, three hundred and forty-four eighty-two. And you tell me what your percentage increase is per year, sir?
I, you see it when I see it.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so. For twenty-four, twenty-five, it'd be three forty-four eighty-two. Vocational bus, two forty-nine twenty-seven. Activity bus trips are forty dollars per hour for all full-size buses. And early childhood, special ed, cost of banner shuttle per day is three eighty-four eighty-two. And those look like they are going up. Going up about three point nine percent per year, if I can come up with, but I can check that later. That's from twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. So, I'll make a copy for most of you guys. So, you can take a look at that, and we'll take it under advisement. We won't make a vote tonight.
This is for how many years?
This can go up to through the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year, so we have them for three initial contract with two-year optional renewal. All right, Vincent, we just opened these tonight, not to go just off the price, and to, I'll read through these and get you, I'll sit down with Craig probably at some point, and we'll kind of go through these options. And it looks like First Student's given us a lot of things to think about, too. We'll have a vote in our April Board meeting, or we can meet prior to that if you wish to do so. Any questions on that?
Any questions on that? All right. I guess get that info out to everybody.
Yep, they can study it.
We'll go from there. Table it for now. We've got two bids here for some surplus weight equipment. These are from the racks that didn't fit, I guess?
Yep, these are nine-foot racks. Jason, where did we buy this from?
What was that?
Surplus.
It's a surplus weight store. They were like out of Illinois State University. They were football teams, weight racks.
They're really nice. They just don't fit in the field house. That's the problem. They're about, what, a foot too tall? You gotta take the ceiling tiles out to use them? That don't work.
Do you want me to announce this, I guess?
Yes.
So, this is first bids from Green Ridge School District for the three racks. For all three racks, there's an offer of thirteen fifty, one thousand three hundred and fifty.
What did we pay per rack? Was it a thousand per rack?
But that came with the bench, too.
Came with the bench, too.
With the adjusted bench, this is like.
Your next bid is.
Brian Beanland.
From Brian Beanland. I'm assuming this is for all three?
Yes.
In the, they say nine hundred for all three.
So, you guys can accept one of those, or you can reject them all?
That's it?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Green Ridge for four thousand fifty dollars, if I understand it right.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Thirteen fifty, yeah, but it was a piece.
Okay.
For thirteen fifty.
So, we've got a motion by Beau to accept Green Ridge's offer for one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for all three racks. So, we got a motion by Beau, seconded by Ashley. All in favor? Motion carries six oh. So, moving on now, we've got a, a... City wants the school district to enter into a lease agreement for the use of the fields at the city park. I'm going to shut up because I'm not even going to get started. Maybe. I'm not going to promise, so I'll let you all talk on this one. The first year is two dollars. And then three grand.
Per field or together? What's my question?
Together, I'm assuming.
They're showing our rent is one dollar for twenty-twenty-four. I understood this.
Says two. He got rent.
Yeah, getting a shot of power. So, what's your all's take on this?
I assume, I don't remember putting something like this before, so I guess this is brand new, right?
It's branded, yeah.
So, we don't have a choice as far as, we have no other fields?
We always have a choice.
When we did the updating for the drainage on the girls' softball field.
The school district made a donation, yes.
Okay, I thought so. So, it was not fully funded by the city? And then it was?
School board as well.
The, most of the labor was donated for that then, correct?
Not most of it, all of it.
So, it was donated. There was nothing?
So, it's typical. I'll watch it a little bit. My concern is they're wanting us, they're wanting the school district to enter into a lease agreement, okay? All right, are the fields going to be ready to go? Are they going to be chalked mode? Now, the baseball field, when you have the lights on, when that breaker gets hot, the lights go out. So, is the city going to address the lights? Well, I can answer that for you.
So, then my next question was, when you just made a comment about, will the fields be ready and chalked and everything? Right now, who does that?
We do.
Right now, either Jason or one of the janitors would go down there, or a coach would go down there to be sure it's chalked, to be sure the restrooms, hell, the in-mat, you can chalk it, I don't know.
And then when it comes to.
To be sure the restrooms are clean and.
Right now, we chalk it. Last year, I mowed both fields probably three times each in the spring before they get to their bitted-out contracts where they actually start mowing regularly because they don't, you know, it's different playing games on grass versus the park. So, we probably mowed three times each field I mowed, chalk it each time. Mike Grex, who is with the city, helped Daniel figure out the exact lines for the softball field. Baseball field's pretty simple, but me and Daniel would mark the fields, make sure the press box was clean, ready to go, make sure everything was ready to go. This year, we have to take out the trash after games, so, you know. Interested to see if that includes them taking care of the field or not.
It doesn't.
Does not.
With a lease agreement, is, it should be ready to go, right? It should be ready to go?
Well, it would be if it was in the terms of the agreement. I mean, I think you could put that into the terms of the agreement.
Do you all pay for the job itself? School pays for the job and everything?
They also put some clay down and stuff.
The city bought, the city, the city will buy the clay. But the city don't want to put the clay down. So, therefore, you got to scramble and get.
Is this a typical cost for, like, other organizations to use the city fields as well?
I have no idea.
Are they figuring about how many times we use it? It's a pretty fair question, I see.
Will the thirty people utilizing the field on a certain date to a certain day?
Two, there was no charge on that.
They didn't dare, they looked at it.
You guys don't have to pay.
It's just a little bit of a, thirty's on this, so I don't know.
I'll totally look at it.
Says that one, spots here.
But we paid, we pay for it to get mowed.
Number two.
We pay insurance on it while we move. I don't know if that's supposed to be taken into consideration or not, but.
Who's we?
TRA for the whole field. We got one of these, too, but it didn't have a charge on there. Now, it's because, like, they report to be mowed, which is around twenty-five hundred dollars a year, I think.
Well, the city has an activities director, so it should be the city's responsibility to have chalk mowed, bathrooms cleaned, waters on, trash is taken out. So, we shouldn't have any district employee going down there if we enter into this agreement. If you guys want to explore other options, I'm down with that, too.
You want us to sign a five-year deal?
Yeah, that's pretty long.
What if we cut pro, no, I'm not saying we're cutting programs, but what happens if we, programs lost and we still pay three thousand every year, therefore not using the field? I'm not saying we're cutting, I'm just saying that was up.
Or if you build a field?
Correct. I like that one.
Any idea what rubbers on?
There was a... There was some discussion, I think, at some point with the city lawyer, and they're looking at their own budgets as well as a year or two ago. Yeah, just how they improve their facilities. They've approached us a few times, and we've always, you guys have always been generous with people, whoever's on the board, to try to help them with scoreboard, help with the drainage. We've kind of been a part of this. We've kind of been a part of the solution.
Because that was at TRA, I'll present things, so.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing wrong with that.
Question, is there any way, if the only way we can use the fields is to do this lease, that we can figure out a way to start charging for our games to offset this cost? Because we don't charge for anybody to come to the park and watch softball baseball.
Jason and I talked about this.
Be hard to do, it's a same.
And no, it'd be hard to do. Baseball last year, we had to do it for the quarterfinals game inside, defend it off, and, you know, and the dis, during the quarterfinal game, we get a cut, so we get twenty percent. So, you know, it's like I told Dr. Rob, the amount of hours I spent putting the fence up, if you paid me for that, then that's how much we would've made. It was about enough to pay people to, which Amy's husband helped me put the fence up as well. You know, the amount of hours we spent doing that would've paid for the fence, but, yeah, that's a great question if we're being charged.
I mean, you had to have another gate.
Yeah, or they'd have to let us leave the fence up all, all spring. Which then they gotta mail around.
I mean, it's a lot to offset our, our costs considering, I mean, where we're starting off and beginning here ourselves as well.
I don't know. I don't like the idea when the lights go out. Well, I don't even like the idea of this whole thing, but that's my personal opinion. I mean, it, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll stop.
Do you know, Coach, do, does California have to pay to use the fields, uh, car field? Car field, whatever they call it.
They don't need them.
They have.
They don't need them. They don't need them.
Yeah, I know that Stover was gonna have to pay to use theirs, but now they shipped their kids over to Brussel's to practice every day, and play their games at Brussel's, because they weren't willing to pay.
I see paying three thousand.
And Brussel's doesn't charge them?
I don't know what their agreement is on that. I know it must.
Now she's paying Stover on my lines.
Because then you'd have turf and you wouldn't miss a game.
But then you're gonna run into, I mean.
They have to work each other's schedule.
Their district's gotta have practice and... Games.
Stover uses the city field, not the.
Right.
Not the high school.
The very one across the way.
Right, what I'm saying.
They don't have turf there.
If you, no, and if you said if they were going to Brussel's, they're playing.
No, they're playing.
They're playing at Brussel's City Park.
Oh, the city went across from the school, not the one at the school, not the football field. Okay, I'm mad, sorry. Yeah, I just think you all have, it's turf there, it's a no-brainer.
We still got portal fees.
Yeah. Probably gonna put it up tomorrow. Did we just recently?
Yes.
That's kind of the problem, right? I mean, it's twenty twenty-four. They've been, they've been talking about doing it for the last two months, and they never said anything, never said anything.
So I just.
They said this week or last week.
The end of last week, I guess Friday.
Guys, we'll do it year to year.
Well, I think that, for me, I'd like to understand like what other options we can have. I think, you know, I think it's fair to lease a ground, I think, to use if they've got, if they've got money and, like, if we're... If there's a cost associated with them having it, which I assume there is, it's probably fair to charge for us to use it, but probably maybe not in combined with, some of the extra stuff that we're adding to it. You know, our labor is, is money, essentially. Our donations obviously is money, so combining the two to me is weird. Saying we're gonna charge and take that. But we have a program where we have kids that should be able to play baseball and softball, so we gotta have people that can play on it. It just kind of stinks that this came to us so late, it's kind of unfair. We're right in the middle of, when do we start, when we start? Our first game's Friday.
We had Gabe Rean stuff, though.
Yeah. I mean, I would be in favor of the rent for the first year.
This letter that was sent to Craig and I was addressed to the both of us. It says in the letter, the city came to the agreement of three thousand dollars based on what TRA pays for upkeep, the little league field on a yearly basis.
There's no way you all spend three thousand dollars on upkeep on that field.
I know we spent twenty-five hundred on mowing last year. I know that's from.
It's a city property.
No, I, I'm not saying you're wrong, but I know we pay for the mowing, we pay for all of our own chalk.
Then we should have that same option in the, in the school district to be able, we're gonna maintain it, mow it.
I didn't even know this was getting sent to you guys, so the one I got was just I thought she needed it for her, because we have to send our insurance to them every year that we pay for TRA.
So we would be paying your, like?
Or not, we charge, yeah.
What do they charge, are they going to, my question is, are they gonna start charging the men's leagues and co-ed leagues? Or if it's just men's leagues that have softball?
And they don't charge to use shelter houses?
I mean, that's what I'm saying, if they're gonna.
The men's leagues, I think, that's a, the city makes money off of that.
I don't know, that's my understanding.
You're right.
I believe so. Like the entry fees for the teams, that's city. And for those games, the city marks the fields if they're not already marked, you know?
So you said you didn't have a meeting until the first?
You don't have to tuck your head, how many softball and baseball games are at home?
Typically around eight or nine.
A piece?
Yeah. Some years you're a little heavier. Last year, we were a little heavier on baseball. Some years you get a lot of rain and then you only got six. I think five years is too long, personally.
I agree.
Like yearly.
I agree.
And then offset if we do maintenance on the field, mowing.
Mowing, taking care of the mounds, batters boxes. Again, if you're entering into a lease agreement, you're using it, it should, I mean, I'm done.
Backstop. Backstop at the baseball field right there?
Correct. So what I'm hearing is you'd like to approve it on a yearly basis, and Kelly said, have an offset for the labor we provide.
Maybe the same consideration that TRA.
And what was, what was that, her twenty-five hundred total?
It said they, we pay for three thousand. I said we paid twenty-five hundred mowing last year, but then, I, I don't know if they're including our chalk and, you know, all that stuff. We clean, we clean the after, and we just don't sustain when we use it. Not that that costs us anything.
You all have insurance, but.
We have insurance, we pay insurance.
But the school has insurance for our athletes on top of that. I mean, we have that no matter what.
Each kid has to have insurance, yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, so we wouldn't, they have it to where since they have, like, each player would have insurance covered that way, cover everybody that way, we're ours, we're already covered. So we don't need additional insurance, nor does the city, because it's already covered through the school.
They're each, they're each covering their own, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Each kid has to provide it, yeah.
Do you know how much our insurance is?
Around three thousand a year, but that's for all sports.
Right, yeah, but.
I'm not sure whether they're building a baseball, if we don't sign this. Right? We've got a game, what'd you say next?
We have our first home game Tuesday.
We have our first road game Friday.
So, I mean, what are, what are, do we know what our options are with that? If they're not meeting until the first, then?
We, probably the best options that I can think of are, you know, nearby school districts, so you've got California, you've got Brussel's, and schools that have fields, and we would have to work around their schedule and see what they would charge us, because they're gonna charge us.
Bunston has a field.
So, today is, today's got some nice fields. That's right.
But they can't practice on a field that's going everywhere?
That's a problem too. It's, that's, when you have activities and you don't have those facilities for them, and we talk about having two gyms sometimes, talk about improving our other facilities, this is kind of what we went into. If you guys want me to talk to the city about, you know, draw up a, a letter and say, we would be agreeable to, just tell me what those things are. Annual approval by the board. Offset our labor with the preparation of the field, are those two things? Is there anything I'm missing? Great. Are you guys wanting to table it? Or do you want to make a motion to approve it and vote?
It doesn't say if we don't approve, we don't get to play it.
We just show up and take it over?
Um, negative, kind of deal.
Well, it says that they can revoke the agreement with written notice by January thirty-first, but it doesn't say that we can, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, they're, like, that, that's kind of what I was thinking through, as I was looking through this, is that it's just not very tight from a contract perspective.
I'll be going over to our lawyer and get some recommendations on it.
I think that were to enter in, that's what I would do.
Okay.
And if you talk about, and if we.
Still three thousand, you're freezing.
And some of the other things that you were talking about, like the offsetting. Then we could all always... Meet prior to their meeting, beginning of April. How would we go?
Who? To the city's meeting?
Yeah, if we don't do anything tonight, and we go through the lawyer, our lawyer and what have you, and get information, if we don't make a decision tonight, we could meet again prior to the city's next meeting and have some of our questions answered.
Well, we may have to meet prior to Tuesday, if they would say, okay, we'll do it on a deal.
Contact status. Well, you could approve it for this year, and then say, this year only, and say, and you're reviewing it with our legal.
Yeah, but then they'll come back and they'll, they'll revoke it, because we're saying just a dollar. Unfortunately.
Well, it is not very neighborly to give us this early before.
I think they'll be fine next, for the next few weeks. I think in good faith. In good faith, they'll believe that we are trying to do what's best for the district. I think they'll give us until at least their, their next meeting in April.
I think that's why they give us some grace in the first year or two, yes. But I am.
But they still wanna find your decision, maybe, to meet.
Correct, that's the part we've known was like, so.
Come arrest the kids for trespassing.
What direction do you guys have for you, and what I've heard so far? And what actions would you like me to do? I heard by, by legal, seeing what our lawyer says and recommendations on that. Uh, and there would be to revoke the agreement. I heard an offset for labor supplies in that field. I heard some about charging for games. I'm gonna still look into that, see what that might help us.
Does the contract say anything about advertising?
No.
Because like right now, we put signs up too.
Yeah, we're supposed to be done that Sunday, so.
So you might make sure that's in, that we're allowed to advertise on the fencing.
Sorry, representatives from our transportation companies, we will not be taking any other action tonight regarding you guys. So I'm sorry if I should make that clear.
That's alright.
You got good.
I didn't want you to hang out.
Thank you.
So should we just take a hold off on putting those signs up?
Oh, I am seeing that the way to rule up this agreement under number two, unconditional considerations, if they're gaining rights first.
So like, they have some studies, like they might give all the work. Yeah. That's really cool.
Well, it's for the left. It gives them the right to do that, not us.
Guess who's gonna be, kind of like Craig said earlier, who's gonna be responsible for rights? I mean, who's responsible for them now?
If they go out, or they just, they shut off after so long?
Correct.
No, they don't.
Well, I mean, I've, I've got to close it, Kinnler, before.
So then I continue to maintain that, what's that mean?
I would assume they're gonna pay three thousand dollars.
Who knows?
Yeah, I mean, I would think that if we're gonna do this, we'd have to accept some sort of language that would provide, that would require some performance by them.
Is one of their issues with the scoreboard too? Because I know we had issues with scoreboard.
Had it next a few years back, because we paid for half of that.
Yeah.
It does have some crazy times, I don't know if it was on that thing.
I still, there was an issue between the lights and the scoreboard being on the softball field. The, the softball scoreboard was fine until the lights came on, and then it tripped a breaker or something, and I had to call it back. So I'm kind of, uh, Mr. Rep has helped me with that. And we got it lined out, and they had to change some sort of future breaker out, I don't know. I smiled, as I did. And said, this is working, but then it was repaired, so. I know that that happened, but I think that that was worked out with the scoreboard company, so I might be wrong about that.
Baseball scoreboard didn't work last year when we started, and I had to get a part for that.
A part for that, and it may be replaced.
So point of contact for repairs and malfunctions of equipment on the fields.
Yeah, I mean, I think something that says, say, we're responsible, make sure the field is in good working order. I don't know what the language you give us, the scoreboard.
Scoreboard vibes.
The, you know, fields and all of the, you know, you can use the legal language there, all of the attachments and.
What are those called?
Vex grips.
Yeah.
I was using vex grips that night.
Maybe worth talking to, um, Audible, using some, they have a deal with the Brussel City.
Stover.
Stover, oh, Stover does. I mean, it may be worth seeing if they have any thoughts on contract language, that they thought was, was good.
Do we have our baseball schedule already for next year, Jason?
Say what?
Do we already have the baseball schedule for next year?
Uh, pretty much, all of our conference games, non-conference games, we have to move somewhere around since we switched conferences. Um, but we will with, by the end of the, end of the school year. Most, most of the time with like baseball and stuff, they schedule, next year's the week you play that game. So like Friday when we play Smithon next week, if we were gonna play Smithon again. So like Friday when we play Smithon next week, if we were gonna play Smithon again, we would both send out a thing like, this is the rollover date or whatever.
So if we have our schedule by the end of April or early May, then if we agree to this, we should get top priority with scheduling. I mean, I know they have it in bold that it's up to them, but I wouldn't agree to pay if we're not even gonna be able to have our baseball schedule and softball schedule.
Do you have to pay to do, use the golfers?
No.
We did for a short time though.
Yeah.
When I took over as athletic director, the first year it was free, the second year, um, there was a charge for that and I think that maybe the year after that, and then it changed.
My first year, yeah, I told them.
But yes, there was an interval where they were contacted.
And you're growing your sport, you're growing your golfers, you're growing your future.
And they had what, one more match?
Yeah, one, one, two year, yeah.
That number back then, I think, was fifteen hundred, is what the country club charged for the golf for that season.
So what do you guys wanna do with the, with this?
Well, I don't think we can approve it as it's, I would not be in favor of approving it the way it reads right now.
So we're gonna table? Is that the consensus I'm getting?
I think it's all nearly stopped.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to paying something and use the field, but I think there's some other consider, like considerations that should be in there as well. That's all I'm saying.
I agree.
Okay, let me read back through the deckwork directions you guys have given me. Need to look into charging for games, if that's possible, we can make that happen. To offset our labor and supplies in front of the field, to talk to them about that, give them a number on what that's costing us, are they going to do it? They going to do it or we're gonna continue to do what we do? Um, ability to revoke the agreement, not those, them having the ability to revoke current agreement. Have our lawyer take a look at it. Need a permission to advertise on the fencing, need a point of contact for repairs and malfunctions of the field. Make sure things are in good working order, if not, we'll be contacting them, ask them to fix it. Take a look at and see if there's any other contract language out there, possibly Stover, using Raisales. And the baseball softball schedule, we would like to have priority for the games, especially the ones we already have set. Is there anything else I missed?
No, I mean, you could build this and say something like, you know, we will, let's say we did a two-year, we had an amount. You could say that the contract will extend, uh, the following year unless either party notifies the other within a certain period of time, let's say ninety days or something. That they don't wanna continue that following year's contract. That way you're not going every year to approve it, you could have like, just like a notice, a notice provision that would trigger it. Either I don't want out or you don't write it, want out, you gotta do that writing. That's pretty common.
The only thing I can think of that gives me some pause, hey Coach Cold Pepper, what if I tell you in February we don't have any fields available?
You're gonna have a very big expense that you didn't count for.
There we go.
Transportation.
If they had that ability, just to cut us off at the knees within ninety days of a season starting.
Well, it says January thirty first already.
You're, you're in the same boat though. Either way, I mean, if you're gonna, if we're gonna say we're gonna approve this every year, then it's not approved the following year until you approve it. So, yeah, I mean, if you didn't wanna use a period of time, you could use January for thirty first, you could say something like, well, you know, either use, tell us you want out. Or we tell you we want out by January thirty first, if no one says anything, then it goes to the next year. It'd be nice if they, it would be nice if they just changed that day from January thirty first to like May thirty first, so then we had, you know, nine months to play. And we had a budget to work off of. Cause if they do it January thirty first, that really puts us in a bad spot. Yeah, when is your, um, when would be the latest we play on that field? That would be the day you could use. Last year it was like around the twentieth of May, it was right there before. Yeah, you could say June first, maybe.
Right.
Yeah. Change it from January. Yeah, that would give us.
Thing is, he's contracting with, with games the year prior, so this year he's actually contracting games from next year's schedules. Pretty well set, right? So that, that makes it harder, cause, but we have to find a new venue, but if you're just a few months away is my concern.
At least if we had nine months, it'd be better than two.
Yeah. So June first. So is there a motion to table this until like do some further research and talk to our lawyer and write some of this stuff together? Give me anyone to look at and propose it to the city? By the time we're gonna be using their fields without an agreement.
I was gonna say, we're still what we're doing right now, so.
Kelly, any thoughts?
Well, I'll make a motion, we table this until we're able to iron out the language in there, make sure we're doing this in a smart way.
So we got a motion by vote to table this issue.
I'll second.
Second by Ashley, all in favor, six oh.
Alright, I'll move us into executive session pursuant to six one zero point zero two one to discuss three, six, thirteen to include. This matter, Mr. Cold Pepper, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Pediger, and Dr. Rob.
So we got a motion to vote.
Second.
Close session, seconded by Stephanie, vote.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes, sir.
Manette. Steph. Yes, six oh.